Chief, salute to the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Maul, roll the roll, please.
Mr. Brawsky?
Here.
Mr. Braskew?
Here.
Mr. Harvey?
Here.
Mr. Benz?
Here.
Mr. Rockoff?
Here.
So, a slight change in our lineup this evening. Ms. Maul is sitting in for Ms. Pullen. Ms. Pullen is the wife of one of our co-inspectors, Ed Pullen, and his mother passed away. So, our condolences go out to the Pullen family at this time. We thank Ms. Maul for stepping in and pinshitting for us. We're going to begin tonight with one of the favorite things we do here, which is a graduation ceremony for the Citizens Police Academy. I'll allow the officers who are here and the command staff to discuss a little bit. We have some people here who have taken part in learning about police work. We're happy that they did so, and we're equally happy for the officers and staff from our police department who have put this all together. So, I see Officer Jaeger here.
I am.
It's his show, so go ahead.
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Harvey. Good evening, gentlemen. Thank you for allowing us to acknowledge our Citizen Police Academy participants this year. I'm going to give you an overview of the 2019 program. We started on September 25th with our welcoming and outline of all the upcoming classes. Our second class was given by Sergeant Clark. He talked about evidence collection and what the procedure is for a crime scene. Sergeant Clark also created a crime scene in which we divided the group, the citizens, into three groups. Each group was given 15 minutes in the crime scene, a five-minute rotation to view and analyze. They then had a week to try to figure out what steps they would have taken for their investigation. We returned for our third class and had each group make a presentation detailing their ideas to solve the crime. Sergeant Clark then did a case review about this reenacted crime scene. Class four brought us to the range. There Sergeant Finelli, Corporal Langen, Officer Redunda, Officer Elmore, and K-9 Monte showed us all of the SWAT equipment and demonstrated the use of weapons and explosives. This class ended with room entry using paintball guns. Our fifth class was a makeup class due to rain. We met at the township park for our K-9 demo. Corporal Langen and Officer Elmore and K-9 Monte delivered this class. They talked about all aspects of training and working as a K-9 officer. Corporal Langen then hit around the lake as the citizens tracked him with Monte to find him. The following class was conducted by Sergeant White and was our use-of-force training. He spoke about the use-of-force continuum. They then went hands-on with come-alongs, pressure points, baton-striking, and handcuffing. Our seventh class, we took a road trip to the Bucks County prison. We listened to Administrator Dave Kratz give us the history of the prison. He talked about the daily operations of the facility. Dave also talked about life as a correctional officer and an inmate. He was very informative and answered the dozens of questions that we had. Our next class was spent with Judge Wyslowski. As usual, this class was, once again, one of the favorites of our citizens. Judge Wyslowski explained all aspects of her job, and we also got to watch a video arraignment. Our ninth class was presented by Sergeant Clark and Lieutenant Whitney, and it was a case review of the John Sorber arrest and conviction. Our 10th class was back on the road to Pensbury High School West to use a classroom. Lieutenant Whitney did a case study on kidnapping, on the kidnapping and murder of Diane Carrato and the conviction and life sentence of Kenneth Patterson. We then had a class with police scenarios. I had several role players attend. We then put our citizens into stressful situations to see how they would react. Our 12th and final class was a shoot-don-shoot. Lieutenant Whitney and Corporal Wolverton each had a station. Each person had several opportunities to view videos and make a split-second decision to shoot or not shoot. While they were doing this, I did field sobriety testing with our fatal vision goggles. I once again want to thank Chief Wilcox for his continued support of all our community programs, whether it's the STEPS Program, DARE Program, Youth Police Academy. He is behind these youth educational programs. Our Citizen Police Academy, he takes great pride in knowing that other agencies have modeled their Citizens Academy after ours. He also supports our prevention program in the high school, which is called Program Hero. Gentlemen, again, I thank you for your continued support of the police department as we all continue to strive to be the first and finest. Is there a chance that we can have the citizens come up and do a photo?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
You're kind of covering up Don Boraski. Sorry, the tall guy. The guy in the hat, there you go.
Thank you very much.
Did you see him? Did you go at it?
No, I didn't realize.
Davis posted something. I'm not raising my hand. I see Klein posted. I went after him.
Chief?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thank you for allowing me to step up here this evening. When I left here last, we were talking about accreditation and that when I, we talked about it, I had full expectations that we were going to be accredited. As you gentlemen already know, we were accredited. I brought the certificate in with the plaque for you gentlemen all to see it this evening. And what this evening is about is about saying thank you to everybody. I'd like to thank the team, which consisted of team leader Sergeant Brian White, Corporal Arons, Corporal Wolverton, Corporal Callahan, Officer Amida, Officer Philippi, Officer Thomas, and Sansone. They consist of an eight-man team, but this is really a team effort throughout the entire police department. No one person makes accreditation and no seven or eight people make it. Not only did these guys work tirelessly working with this, they did the Power DMS, and it was a learning experience for them. For most of this team was a first-time effort on them. They did a wonderful job. If you gentlemen could have attended the luncheon that day and heard all the plaudits that we received, it was, it was very heartwarming. And as a result of that, I just want to make sure that our evidence custodian, Don Ork, gets his plaudits because without him doing what he does back there, accreditation doesn't happen. We had our support staff, we had Mrs. Seiler, everybody. It was a truly team effort. We had our detective bureau working, taking care of the processing garage, making sure everything was shipshape down there. And I want to thank Mr. Gray. Mr. Gray was instrumental in providing us with the stuff that we needed to achieve accreditation. And that leads us to the board. Without the board doing what you do, we wouldn't have been accredited. If you guys don't give us the opportunity to get Power DMS, we don't get accredited. So, when I say it's a true team effort, it really was. And we, I'm certainly proud of it, but it's not one person. It was the entire police department because the officers who were working that day, they made sure that they did what they had to do. If they don't do the reports right when they get reviewed, the accreditation consists of 164 standards. I want to say roughly 122 were germane to us. So, they have to find examples. So, if the officers don't do the reports correctly, then we don't find, so it's, it's a trickle-down effect for everything. So, it's truly, truly a team effort on everybody's part. I want to thank the board. I want to thank Mr. Gray. I want to thank everybody in the police department. With that being said, Mr. Harvey, I want to thank you. You and I are two of the oldest, not old, old people, but we've been around here the longest. And I want to thank you for all the stuff you did for our police department and stuff that you made, that you made happen. And I want to thank you personally because you know that you recommended me way back when. I don't know if you still feel that way, but I hope you do. But I want to thank the entire board, and I'm very proud that we're accredited once again, and will continue to do it. Accreditation has started already again because we're back, starting in January, we're going to do a policy review once again, and we're going to go through all the policies. Once we're done all that, then we start back in accreditation and we, it'll take three years. We'll have this accreditation for three years, and then we'll have to do it once again. What you do, it'll be 2020, we'll do all the policies for 2020, then it'll be 2021, 2022, and 2022 is when reaccreditation will come up again. Any questions, gentlemen? Thank you very much. We really appreciate it.
Thank you, Chief. Yeah. Excellent job. Thank you. And obviously pass our thanks on to everybody. And you're right, it is like everything else, pretty much in life, it is a team sport. And the more people you have pulling on the, on the oar to go in the same direction, the easier it is. And so, thank you very much and convey that thanks to everybody, not only on the team, but all the officers we have on the force.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And good luck to you, Mr. Harvey.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move on to public comment. We have a few names on the list. First name is Ray Erickson.
My apologies, but I haven't been here for about 10, if not 12, years. The last meeting is in regard to the nonferrous metals separators via wheelbrider.
Right.
And I think Mr. Chang was here in regard to some sort of semiconducting materials in regard to silicon where they poured the foundation, but they never completed the construction. I don't know if they're going to be doing zone refining in regard to mineralogical silicon and zone refining on that particular slab. Are there any statements from that particular concern? When Mr. Bennett was here, he said he tried to inspect the slab that was poured for the, the mineralogical grade silicon, but he said there weren't any, necessarily any ordinances within Falls Township to really inspect. Is it a matter of that particular Chinese concern? But is, is there, have they sold the property? Is the property still there, or are they just waiting for the concrete slab to cure entirely before placing the very expensive equipment on it?
I'll be honest with you, Mr. Erickson, you're testing my memory as well. I don't, I mean, I know that, I think it's, was it Abington Relden, maybe? Was, was maybe the company you referred, you referred to originally was separating out the metals and things like that and separating out the-
That was for wheelbrider. I think you had given them the permit to do that or whatever the waiver was in regard to nonferrous separation at the wheelbrider facility. But then that same particular evening, there was a, a concern-
Yeah, I don't remember-
-with mineralogical silicon. And then I think a couple of meetings later, Mr. Bennett had said that the concrete was poured. It was like five or six feet thick.
Right.
But there really weren't any ordinances to really inspect. Do you know if that particular company, my apologies-
No, that's right. The only company, I mean, we had a company from Taiwan that was here doing solar panels. They were making the wafers for solar panels.
Oh, they're still doing that?
Maybe that's, that was a polysilicon. They did open, they were in operation for a short while, and then they, they closed, unfortunately.
Oh, my apologies.
Yes, no, that's, that's fine.
Last I heard of it, that the foundation was poured, nothing else.
Yeah, they, they did construction and were operational for a short time, but I, you know, not every business succeeds, unfortunately.
I'd like to congratulate you for making it to county commissioner.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
But can I have your point of view in regard to some of the deleterious, evidently adversaries campaigning saying that you're responsible for importing trash up to Delaware?
Yes, yes.
Do you have comments on that?
Uh, yeah, well, I've been a busy man, sort of bringing trash up the Delaware for, since I was in high school, apparently. As you probably know, living here as long as you have, Mr. Erickson, Waste Management Operations in Falls and Tullytown have never, ever brought trash up the river.
You know who's behind that campaign?
Um, well, I, I think all the ads had on it who paid for it, so I won't get into that, but-
My apologies.
That's fine. That's all right.
In regard to tonight's agenda, there are things related to composting as well as sewer inspections, and my question is in regard to water quality in Falls Township. If they're going to be composting, and I'm not quite sure in regard to the tonnage and the operation, it's going to be wood, leaves, a whole host of things, there's a tendency for the tannic acids to find themselves displaced and going downstream, whereas the bulk of the cellulitic material stays in place. I've noticed you have, you're, there's a thing about holding tanks, retaining basins, but from the point of view of the analytical chemistry, will spectroscopy be utilized and checked periodically via the township, irregardless of things related to EPA and the Pennsylvania Environmental, I think it used to be known as Resources, but it's a DEP, Department of Environmental Protection? Will the township check state inspections in regard to affluence from that particular composting facility?
Well, the composting, as you'll hear from the presentation shortly, is actually taking a lot of operations which are currently outdoors and moving them indoors in the facilities where a lot less of that kind of leaching is going to-
My apologies.
No, that's fine. A lot less of that leaching is going to happen. As for DEP inspections, we're made aware of them when they happen. They were, you know, given copies of the reports and things of that nature, especially if there are violations. I can't comment, I don't know what the DEP schedule is going to be or what their policies are going to be in regards to inspecting this kind of facility. I'm not really sure.
The EPA seems to rely heavily on NOAA, the National Oceanographic and Atmospheric Administration, in regard to spectroscopic analysis of air quality, whereas water quality is basically a state function common of Pennsylvania. I'm not quite sure of the role of township and county secondary inspections in regard to water quality.
Yeah.
Are you aware of it?
No, there typically isn't, really isn't much of a role. We're not really set up for that here in terms of testing water quality. If, if we have concerns as a township, we would contact DEP.
Are there any slots on the environmental committee?
I'll be honest, I don't have that in front of me. I'm not sure, to be honest with you.
I, I just wanted to say so long.
Sure.
It's been a pleasure listening to you.
No, thank you very much, Mr. Erickson. I appreciate that.
Have a good evening.
Nice to see you again.
Lots of luck in making the governorship.
Let's do one thing at a time. Thank you. Sean Cassidy?
My apologies, Lord. I think I signed the wrong form back there. I'm the township president, but I'm actually here on behalf of Fox County Juvenile probation office. We were going to the meeting because we just opened a sub-office down here in Township. I signed the-
Oh, okay. Okay, no problem. Michelle Dice?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I believe the company that this gentleman just referred to is a new business that opened in the township, so-
Oh, she was going to recognize them later on.
Yeah.
Yeah, Mr. Gray, I recognize you later. Yeah, he'll, he'll say something a little later on. Yeah, okay. Thank you, though.
Good evening. Thank you, Chairman Harvey and members of the board. I'm Shelley Dice from the Village of Wee, chief, and my comments this evening are specific to the budget and the Department of Park and Recreation. In the late 90s and earlier, board had the wherewithal to accept to purchase lands for a dollar that slowly became our community park. And we opened Phase One and Phase Two, and we had two playgrounds within those parameters. I read an article in the paper that was possibly speaking about adding some things with playgrounds, and I would like to make several points that have changed since 20 years ago when we put those playgrounds in place. Sadly, one in 59 children are diagnosed with autism. We don't understand the reasons why, but when it crosses your threshold, as it did mine with my grandson, life can change. And our community has always been responsive to children's special needs. All you have to do is go down Levittown Continental and see the work of Marie Wing and others in the Challenger Field. But we're also seeing, though, in our playgrounds, we only have one adaptive swing. We also don't have fences at our playgrounds. If you pull up to our playgrounds, which are right next to busy parking lots, highly traveled, no fence. But we fence our dogs, and we make sure our dogs are safe, and we make sure there's a Sallyport entry there to make sure there's no escaping. But with 69-year-old legs, this Grammy can't chase my runner and can't watch my 18-year-old, 18-month-old at the same time. So, what I'm asking is, and maybe sooner than later, that we look into the budget in placing fencing around our playgrounds. You might also even look at another playground, Mason's Mill, which is a safety town in Huntington Valley. It's built like a small town, has traffic areas and safe areas for our kids to learn to ride bikes, learn the rules of the road. So, again, I would like to suggest that maybe we put this in the budget if it's not there already. Lastly, thank you, Mr. Harvey. Thank you for your time served here. I know you won't forget Lower Bucks when you travel to Doylestown. It's glad that you certainly have our viewpoint to bring with you in Doylestown.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening.
Appreciate that. Thank you very much. Tony Batiste?
On the budget issue, there is a large portion that comes from waste management. Since they have currently a limited amount of land and take waste from all over, not just strictly limited to Lower Bucks or even Pennsylvania, we do need to start looking at alternate sources of township income before the landfill income dries up and goes away entirely, and then everybody gets hit with a huge tax bill. So, we need to start looking at that. Second thing, assuming that Mr. Harvey's going to be leaving the board, I'm guessing you're not working both jobs.
No, you're not allowed to. Right, correct. You're right.
Okay. I would like the board to consider some diversification by appointing Mr. Boraski's opponent, who was his opponent in the last election. Even though that person is a Republican, she is a female, it would add some diversity to our board. Consider it, please. Okay? And the other thing is, is there any news on Elcon, the DEP ruling, the lawsuit?
I think there's, we just heard, there are arguments set, or is a date-
There's a, there's a Rule 27 conference on Friday morning. That is essentially just a scheduling conference. At that point in time, the judge will lay out the brief, the briefing schedule for all the, all the parties, and then schedule a hearing date. More than likely, you're looking probably three to four to five months out after that before there's an actual hearing.
Okay. And that's just, you understand, it's just a hearing, it's not an actual sort of trial?
Yes. Also, is there anything going on with the land that Elcon either intends to buy or has bought?
No, we're not aware of any. I mean, that's, that would be a private deal between Elcon and U.S. Steel. So, we haven't, we haven't heard of any changes in that. As far as I know, they're still under agreement.
I just want to make sure U.S. Steel isn't doing some things down there like adding height to the land?
Well, I think we would notice that.
I love that, so.
70,000 tons of cubic yards would be tough to find.
And the last thing I want to know, is there any conflict of interest or potential or otherwise with our township lawyers and the Elcon's law firm? I just want to clarify that.
I don't know. Elcon's law firm is Fox Rothschild, is that right?
Fox Rothschild.
Yeah, that's a Philadelphia firm. We have no, they've never had any, any connection to township government. I think they've represented businesses that have come before, but they've never done any work for the township.
Okay, thank you.
No, I don't believe they've ever done any work for the township.
That's a very, very big firm, too. It's hundreds of lawyers, I think.
And our lawyers have not ever worked for them and-
No.
I've never worked for Fox Rothschild. No one from my firm has ever worked for Fox Rothschild.
Okay, just checking.
Okay.
Thank you all. Hope you have a Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Same to you. Okay, those are all the names on the list. Are there anybody else who wishes to speak? I see no hands. Okay. Before we move to the certificate appropriateness, since we do have Mr. Cassidy here, did you want to just briefly talk about that and introduce that? I know you're typically, at the end of the meetings, we introduce new businesses, but since Mr. Cassidy's here, Miles will do that now.
There were new businesses that opened during the month of 20, November 2019. Three businesses, they include 375 West Trenton Avenue, Good Vibes Brazilian Jiu-Jitsu, 8 Headley Place in Falsington, Titan Technology, and 333 North Oxer Valley Road in Fairless Hills, Bucks County Juvenile Probation. I believe Mr. Cassidy is here to introduce and discuss his business.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you to the board for inviting us. We are a business, I guess technically, in the township. Again, we, I work for the Bucks County Juvenile Probation Department. We have had a Lower Bucks Supervision Office where our officers do, tend to do paperwork and just use as a kind of stop-in. We had one in Pendell for about 15 years. The building was sold, so we looked around, and we have settled on Oxer Valley Road. We've already moved in, and the office is, it's not really an office where we see clients, so there's not going to be a lot of juveniles around the facility. It's really just kind of a stop-in place for the probation officers who work the school districts of DeChamney, Pensbury, Morrisville. And it's just kind of a waystation for us, and it gives our probation officers, we do field supervision, we do not come, have juveniles come into our office and their parents to see us, we go out and see them. So, it's really just a place for our folks to stop in and utilize the office to do paperwork in, in between appointments. So, happy to be here.
Okay, great. Thank you. Welcome.
Thanks very much. Take care.
Okay. All right, so we will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is a certificate of appropriateness for 10 Yardly Avenue. Mr. Gray?
Yes. This project includes replacement of 14 windows. This has been reviewed and approved by the Harb Board. The owner of the property is Kathleen Doyle, tax map parcel 13020-292. The board has asked to consider this certificate of appropriateness.
Okay. Comments or questions? Is this, anyone here from the property? I didn't think so. Comments or questions?
None.
Okay. Yeah, I don't have any either. Is there a motion to approve the certificate for appropriateness, 10 Yardly Avenue, for new windows?
So, move second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, item three is McGill Fairless Hills Composting Facility, preliminary and final land development, 600 Tyburn Road. Mr. Gray?
Yes, the applicant's proposed project consists of the creation of a 15.5-acre lease area on the property to construct a composting facility and ancillary structures, including an office and storage area, and certain site clearing, along with the associated site improvements, stormwater management, utilities, and parking facilities. Representing the applicant tonight is Mr. Tom Jennings.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Mr. Chairman, good evening, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Tom Jennings of the law firm for Sir Broyles, counsel to McGill Fairless Hills Composting Facility, and the matter before you this evening. McGill is seeking your adoption of a resolution for preliminary and final plan of land development. McGill appeared before the Falls Planning Commission on September 24th, 2019, received a favorable recommendation for the plan, and has worked with the township staff to update the plans accordingly. McGill has entered into a lease agreement and related easement agreement with Warner Company for a 15-acre parcel within the Warner Northside Complex on Tyburn Road, a portion of TMP 134762. Property owner Warner supports this application. The property is within the FM Farming and Mining District. Warner has been engaged in outdoor composting, primarily municipal yard waste, including the township's yard waste, for decades, and has been engaged in outdoor composting consistent for, for that period of time. The McGill facility represents the natural expansion of that use by bringing the compostable materials indoors. McGill proposes to construct and operate a state-of-the-art, fully enclosed, processing facility producing premium composting products. McGill has received and responded to comments from the township engineer, the traffic engineer, and the fire marshal. McGill will comply with all comments received, with the exception of the few stated waiver requests, which have all been recommended by the planning commission. Noel Lyons, McGill's president, will present an overview of the company and the project, followed by Dave Allen, the project engineer. Noel? facility producing premium composting products. McGill has received and responded to comments from the township engineer, the traffic engineer, and the fire marshal. McGill will comply with all comments received, with the exception of the few stated waiver requests, which have all been recommended by the Planning Commission. Noel Lyons, McGill's president, will present an overview of the company and the project, followed by Dave Allen, the project engineer. Noel?
Mr. Chairman, board members, thank you for the opportunity to speak before you this evening. My name is Noel Lyons and I originally am from Ireland. I immigrated to the U.S. about 29 years ago. Shortly after that, I co-founded Gill Environmental Systems. And what started out as a very, very small company with little capital is today, I'm proud to say, one of the most respected businesses in the industry. The origins of our process were actually developed at Rutgers University in the early 70s. And at that time, my now late co-founder was a grad student there at the time. We've, of course, modified it and upgraded that process over the last quarter century or so. Our existence and success are built on two very widespread problems. Problem number one, in the modern world, we all generate a tremendous amount of organic waste of all types. Number two, all these organic wastes have one thing in common. They all came, one way or another, they all came from the soil. And their removal from the soil has caused soil to be greatly degraded and such. So through our composting process, we can take those waste materials, convert them into a compost product, that then when put back in the soil, makes soils healthy again and more productive. To date, we have composted a total of over 5 million tons of biodegradable waste, converting that to about 4 million cubic yards of compost that we've marketed and sold to various end uses. Our customers range from municipalities, landscapers, small businesses, to multinational companies. Our products are sold today primarily to the professional market. Uses include things like sports turf, erosion control, landscaping. We have product, for instance, on over 200 golf courses today. Looking forward, we intend to continue the same model of selling to the professional market and maybe cautiously expanding, we think, into the retail market in the future. There are a total of today about 5,000 composting facilities in the United States. Most of these are small businesses, some are publicly owned. What makes us unique is that over 99% of those businesses are outdoors in all 50 states in the country. We're one of the very, very few that actually have indoor. All of our facilities are primarily or completely indoors. Our newer ones, including this one, will be a totally indoor facility. Why this location? There are two things that are very attractive about this area first. Number one, it's an existing composting facility, so we see it as a wonderful opportunity to upgrade and expand that facility. And the expanded facility will still be on the same, on the exact same footprint. The second reason is the marketplace continues to improve in our business for our products. Growing awareness of soil health and climate change concerns helps our business. And various cities, Philadelphia being one, State of Pennsylvania has done well in terms of bringing in initiatives and green infrastructure related to stormwater and such. All those things drive our business. The facility itself will be about 124,000 square foot building. Primarily, it'll be a concrete building, most of the building. Mitchell and Sally's facility are moved by a wheel loader, a number of wheel loaders, I should say. And we're hoping to compost about 400 tons per day. So I would say, in closing, McGill is a relatively small company. Today, we imply a little under 100 people. We have made an enormous positive impact towards a healthier climate and a healthier environment. Our employees and our customers all share the credit for this, and we're excited about growing that impact here in Falls Township. And thank you for your consideration.
Good evening. My name is Dave Allen. I'm a professional licensed engineer. Work with Earthrez Group. We're a small engineering firm in just north of Doylestown. We have been working on the Warner Northside Quarry and with Warner Company for several years, so we had a lot of background information on the site when we first had a conversation with McGill about this project. Tonight, I mean, I'm more happy to go through the details of the site layout, but for purposes of just giving you an orientation with the site, I have the aerial exhibit with the view of the entire site. So the property is 423 acres. As you can see, a large part of that, 283 acres, is a water impound quarry. It looks like a lake, but is an actual active sand and gravel quarry. Part of that remaining, 140 acres of land, there is a small 15 and a half acre area to the southeast corner of the site, which is that red outline, and that's the proposed lease area that McGill will operate. Today, there is composting operations there. It takes up the full 15 acres. The distinct difference is it's all outside, so it's all grinded, wind drove, cured outside. There is no buildings associated with that operation. McGill are proposing 127 square foot building. The curing will occur inside. There will be an ancillary office and scale, which is located away from the processing building to the west. And then access will-
You can, if you wanted to, you could take the microphone with you, just pulled out. I think the one there, that way you can-
Thank you. So the, this is the proposed building. It's 127,000 square feet. This is going to be the scale and scale house. The access to the site is going to continue as it does today, which is the signalled intersection of Tyburn Road and New Ford Mill Road. So it's about a 2,600 foot drive to the operations through an existing mine haul road. The road's, you know, 30 feet plus wide. There truly will be an advanced improvement over the operations today in regards to stormwater, infrastructure, pavement, lighting, and a little bit landscaping. The site will continue to drain within, towards the quarry. The quarry itself is impounded, meaning that this is one giant 400 acre bowl. It all drains in on itself and actually perks into the groundwater. So there is not a point discharge associated with this site. I'm more happy to go into more details with the grading, if you wish. You know, as right now, we work through the township engineers' review letter and comments and some of the comments from the planning commission members. We have a few waivers.
I was going to note, Dave, for the board, the resolution as drafted by the township is acceptable to McGill. And if you did want to review any of the waivers, note it, we'd be happy to do so.
I think the waivers are pretty standard waivers for industrial areas regarding parking spaces and tree plantings and things of that nature that in industrial areas, we typically don't enforce. Are there comments or questions regarding the presentation so far? Did we want to, any other discussion? I don't know if you were going to go, it's up to you. If you were going to go further into what's on the backside of that in terms of what happens once, like, things come into the building, what's the process?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I certainly can expand. So this, let me, this is the record plan that is part of the land development plan set. So it just gives you a better view of the 15 acre site.
I can just go inside the process if you'd like some-
Oh, absolutely.
So trucks will enter from here, drive over a weigh scale, then they will reverse into the building here. Doors will close while the truck is offloading its indoors. Then we have some key steps. So up here is what we call the blending phase. Then it moves from here into what we call primary composting. And the best way to describe that area is there is a series of what we call bays, but there are in essence buildings within the building. It's a batch process, about 1,000 cubic yards per batch. Then when it goes through the primary phase, it goes to what we call a primary screening, where there's very significant reduction. The oversized material becomes a major ingredient backup for new blends. The final product goes on to what we call a curing stage. And then the curing, after curing, it goes through one final screening, and then it's product ready for sale.
How long does that, I'm sorry, how long does that process take?
The whole process takes, in this environment, about 30 days.
30 days?
About one month, yes.
Oh, about a month?
Yeah.
Okay. Cool. Go ahead.
And that's, yeah, so then it's finished product at that point, yeah.
Okay. All right. For those that are looking at the other screen, but basically vehicles coming in from the left-hand side, materials offloaded in the left-hand side of the building and sort of moves to the right-hand side of the building as it goes further through the process. So I imagine it's being loaded on the vehicles at the far right-hand side.
Correct.
And then trucked out.
Trucked out, yeah.
All right. Okay. Roughly, how many people will work at this facility?
In total, we're in the 15 to 20 people. That's admin, staff, salesperson, manager, and operations.
And about how many trucks per day will be coming and going?
It'll be about 20, 25 trucks per day.
In and out?
In and out, yeah. Quite frequently, when the trucks that come in, and this is something that's unique to us as well, when they offload, they've got a fairly extensive overhead, but inside washing system, so quite frequently, for good business reasons, the trucks that haul in material do quite a portion of the hauling out as well.
Oh, I see. Yeah. Okay. How many trucks are currently coming to the site for the outdoor composting? Do you know?
I don't know, Mr. Rocco.
Based on the tonnage alone, I would speculate it's, you know, 15 trucks a day. There is a lot of mining trucks as well associated with it. So that, we estimated that was 56 trucks per day, again, per tonnage.
What's interesting in this operation is that some of those vehicles that will come to the McGill site would otherwise perhaps be taking a right onto New Ford Mill for disposal of the contents that they're carrying. As Noah likes to say, whatever he, whatever comes in his front door, leaves the back door as a product. And so it completes the loop.
Okay.
There's no byproduct after the process?
No, none.
And if, you know, if there are other questions, we're happy to entertain them. Otherwise, we'd ask your adoption of the resolution as drafted.
Just the only other question I had, I had some questions earlier today. I talked with the engineer and he cleared up some of the things that I hadn't seen in here, so I'm satisfied with that. But just in terms of, I guess, like, in general, people know what gets composted. What kind of materials can they expect to be trucked in? We know what's leaving, but, you know, what's leaving the building? What kinds of materials are we adding into this blend?
We would be, the Pennsylvania DEP would make the ultimate determination there, but I can tell you what we would be looking for a permit for. We would be looking for a wide range of non-hazardous biodegradable materials. We will be interested in food waste, wastewater residuals, and of course, yard waste, and maybe clean C and D wood.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions?
No.
Okay. All right. Any public comment? See no hands. Mr. Jones, anything from you?
No, sir. I would add that the plans are well presented, thorough, and the waivers are incidental.
Okay. All right. I'm sorry, I do have one more. Is there odor from the composting? Does it curse?
There's potential for odor, but in an indoor facility, it is actually all collected or any potential and is scrubbed. No air leaves the building except through a biofilter.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Comments or questions?
No.
Okay, this would be Resolution 19-
26.
1926, which would be granting preliminary and final land development for McGill Fairless Hills for a composting facility at 600 Tyburn Road. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 1926?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Hello.
Okay. Next item on our agenda is the 2020 budget, adopting the resolution establishing the millage rate for 2020 and the budget itself. Mr. Gray?
Yes. On November 19th, at the Board of Supervisors meeting, a presentation was made by Ms. Rukoff regarding the preliminary 2020 budget. This preliminary budget was subsequently advertised and displayed at the Township Building, online, and at local libraries. At this time, a resolution is available for board consideration for adoption for the 2020 budget. Ms. Rukoff and myself are here for any questions you may have.
Okay. Comments or questions for Mr. Gray or Ms. Rukoff?
None.
Pete, do we need to make, amend the motion at all from the last meeting regarding the library?
No, we included that in the-
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Spence?
No.
I have none.
Okay. Yeah, I do want to thank Mr. Boraski for, you know, taking a look at that issue and seeing that we did sort of have some extra money ever since the streetlight changeover from old-fashioned kind of bulbs to the LED bulbs. Mr. Rocco was very, very instrumental in pushing forward. We have saved a lot of money in our streetlight fund, and yet the tax rate was still the same, collecting lots of money and sitting in that fund, which really, quite frankly, wasn't being used. Meanwhile, our library, which hasn't seen an increase in tax funds in almost 30 years, something like, 20 something years, almost 30 years, is now going to be getting some of that extra funding, so that can be something they can improve, obviously their services. It helps with the staff that they have there. So that was a good catch by Mr. Boraski, a good idea. So thank you very much for that. So we do see Resolution 1927. Is there public comment? See, one hand? Is there a motion to open public comment?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Mr. Mariani?
That time of year, so first, let me wish everyone a blessed Christmas, and your families, and peace on earth to men of goodwill. Now, you're going to be leaving this, and I think it's going to be a smooth transition, especially since Mr. Clark is going to be on our transition team, so I don't see any problems, and he's going to be a great help to you.
That doesn't mean he's leaving. He's still going to be here. You know that, Mr. Mariani, right?
Oh, yeah. No, he's just on a transition team. You know, you need the help, and there he is. I wish you'd do that for me from time to time. But since you're leaving, there is one thing I want everybody to know about our chairman, and some of you may know it, others may not. You know, Bob Horry is a descendant of royalty. A lot of people don't know that. And we, we had, we checked his ancestry and went all the way back to the Last Supper. And there was Abraham Harvey attended the Last Supper, and the reason why he's not in the picture is because he wasn't at the head table. He was at table four. So now, now back to business. We have a little fun with that.
How much time did you spend on that?
You want me to roast you?
No.
You know, he said, you made him in charge of the swimming pools because he knows how to swim. His father used to take him out on the lake, give him swimming lessons every day when all the other kids were ice skating. Ready? Ready for business?
We're ready.
All right. Okay. I'll give you the line numbers, make it easier, right? We don't have that many. 31-454-915. That's capital purchases for the Township Building in 662,000, almost 63,000, which is double the projection of 2019. That's a big number. Is that something special we're doing, or?
I'm sure it is. I mean, you're more than welcome to come in, we can talk about that.
Okay. The other one, that 31-494-100, was the fund reserve that's available is 3,700,000. That's almost 6 million less than 29, the 2019 year, end of 9 million. That's a pretty substantial drop. Why?
I'll take a look at it and let you know.
Okay. And I noticed the recycle's down $86,000. The recreational improvements, you got about, well over $500,000, but that's to the community park and our other park. Is there, we're doing something special there? It's a lot of money.
Could be a project included in that lineup.
Could be a project.
There's new playground going in at one of the parks.
Yes.
Yeah, one of the-
3 Million Hills, yeah.
Yeah, 3 Million Hills Park's getting a brand new playground set.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And just, Mr. Mariani, just for, the first item you brought up- And just, Mr. Mariani, just for the, the first item you brought up, the capital improvement, um, I think that's the generators, our new generator we're purchasing, uh, I think for this building, and it's also, um, I think camera equipment, I think-
Camera equipment, yes.
Equipment.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay. Good Christmas to everybody and your families.
Good to you.
Take care of yourselves.
Any other public comment? See no hands? Is there a motion to close public comment?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, so we're looking at Resolution nineteen twenty-seven. If there are no questions for Mr. Gray or Ms. Rukoff, is there a motion to, um, adopt the twenty twenty budget, uh, and also approve the resolution establishing the millage rate for twenty twenty?
Seven.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Item five is consider awarding the workers' compensation contracts for year twenty twenty. Mr. Gray?
The Township request didn't receive quotes for workers' compensation insurance from Vaughn Insurance for the year twenty twenty. Two separate quotes were received, one from Delaware Valley Workers' Comp Trust, or known as DIVIT, in the amount of three hundred eighty-nine thousand and thirty-five dollars, and also from State Workmen's Insurance Fund, or also known as SWIFT, for fifty-one thousand, four hundred eighty-seven dollars. DIVIT will provide coverage for Township employees. SWIFT will provide coverage for volunteer firefighters. The Township has had DIVIT as its work comp carrier since two thousand three. Uh, the Board has asked to consider Delaware Valley Workers' Comp Trust and State Workers, Workmen's Insurance Fund for Falls Township's twenty twenty workers' compensation insurance. Um, in addition, Ms. Anne Smith from Vaughn Insurance is here for any questions you may have.
Okay, questions for Ms. Smith or Mr. Gray regarding the workers' compensation insurance?
No question.
None.
Okay, it's good to see the number, numbers going down. It's always a good thing. Yes, I appreciate that. And I thank Mr. Gray and also Vaughn Insurance for all their hard work with this. Any public comment? See no hands. Okay, is there a motion then to award the workers' compensation contracts for twenty twenty to DIVIT and SWIFT in the amount stated in the December twelfth memo?
So moved.
Second.
This is, uh, a, a motion made in seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, didn't think we, I was trying to think if we need to do a roll call for that, but I guess not. Okay. All right. Mr. Gray, did you want to do the?
Certainly. Uh, at this time, there is a request, uh, to change the broker of record for the SWIFT insurance policy for work, workers' compensation, uh, is currently held by a company called Porter Curtis, and there's, uh, consideration requested of the Board to change that to Vaughn Insurance. Uh, Vaughn Insurance is local, um, they handle our other policies, and they've been doing this for many years. Uh, the Board's asked to consider Vaughn Insurance to be the broker of record for the workers' compensation for the volunteer fireman.
Okay. Comments or questions?
No.
No.
No? Public comment? Uh, Mr. Gray says Vaughn Insurance is local. He's, he's not kidding. They're like, literally like right down the hall, so in this building, which is obviously very, absolutely a very good thing for our employees, because they, uh, you know, Vaughn Insurance has been here for many, many, many years, and they've done very good work, and, and they're always willing to help our, our employees and staff, even if they have questions not related to Township, if they have parents or children and, and having insurance issues and they just need some advice. It's always nice to know they can go to Vaughn just to, just to get some, uh, some, some free advice, and we're glad to have them here. Uh, there are a motion to appoint Vaughn Insurance as broker of record.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Mr. Gray? Sorry. Uh, notice of intent, item six, consider notice of intent to award the bid for the heating and air conditioning replacement project for the police department. Mr. Gray?
On Thursday, December twelfth, the Township, um, opened sealed bids for installation of a new HVAC unit in the police department. Two bids were received. One was from Ray Litwin Heating and Air Conditioning, forty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars, and the second from LGB Mechanical for ninety-nine thousand dollars. Based on the bid results, Ray Litwin is the lowest responsive bidder for the HVAC unit replacement project in the police department. It is recommended to authorize Jones Engineering Associates to issue a notice of intent to award to Ray Litwin for this project. Final award of the contract will be based on, on a successful outcome of the responsible contractor ordinance review, which will be conducted by JEA.
Comments or questions?
No questions.
None. Any public comment? Okay. All right, is there a motion then to authorize Jones Engineering to issue a notice of intent to award the project to late Ray Litwin?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, item seven, consider adopting ordinance amendment chapter one eighty-four, Sewers and Water, to add Article twelve inspections and replacement of private sewer lines, sewer, excuse me, private sewer service laterals, um, if you designate in remaining chapters. Okay. Um, Ms. Gallagher, I was going to go to you, but you pushed the microphone away.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. As we discussed, uh, last month, this is an ordinance that will implement a lateral inspection program, um, within the Township, which will apply to any property that is being transferred. It will require that the, uh, property owner obtain an inspection of the sewer lateral for the, lateral for the property to determine whether or not there are any deficiencies that require correction prior to the transfer.
Comments or questions from board members?
Can you address, I forwarded some of the emails that we received. There was, um, at least one gentleman that had some concerns. I know there was a lot of talk on social media. I didn't actually see it, but I heard about it. Could you address some of those or comment on that?
Sure. Um, as the Board will probably recall, um, for several years, uh, we were unable to approve certain, uh, development projects within the Township, uh, because then the Shammany Interceptor, uh, where a great amount of, uh, the Falls sewage goes, uh, was hydraulically overloaded. Uh, so Bucks County Water and Sewer, working with the municipalities, uh, that went to the Nashamany Interceptor, uh, with, um, the involvement of DEP, um, required that all of the municipalities agree to take certain steps, um, to reduce I and I infiltration and inflow, which is essentially rainwater that gets into the sewer system. Um, one of the most, uh, one of the most prominent ways that water gets into the sewer system, uh, stormwater, is the fact that laterals, the pipe that runs from your house to the sewer main, uh, when they get, uh, damaged over years and groundwater, um, gets in there, that gets into the sewer system. The problem with that is, as you can imagine, when there's a lot of rain, like we've had the last couple of days, when the Nashamany Interceptor is already hydraulically overloaded, uh, it just can't handle all of the stormwater that's getting in there, and then it just has to pass through or it, or it overflows. So in order for us to get our Act five thirty-seven plan approved, and in order for us to begin to be getting, uh, the connection ban lifted, uh, we had to agree to do certain things, uh, in our agreement with Bucks Water and Sewer, but more importantly, uh, with, uh, DEP. And just about thirteen months ago, uh, DEP memorialized the several things we needed to do, and one of them was that we needed to pass a lateral inspection ordinance. Um, I did see some of the social media posts that you had, you had forwarded to me, and, uh, many of my municipalities and many of my, uh, sewer authorities have these I and I inspection programs and these lateral inspection programs. And I think that a couple of things that were mentioned in some of those social media posts were taking real, real extreme examples. For the most part, uh, it involves hiring a plumber to run a, this is not, this is only about, on property transfer. Uh, this is only when you're getting ready to sell your house, uh, but it involves running a, a camera down your lateral to determine what shape it's in, and the majority of them are in, are in good shape, and some may have minor repairs that need to be made. It's only in those rare instances that the pipe is completely deteriorated because of roots or because of other issues that the entire, uh, lateral needs to be, needs to be dug up and, um, and replaced. But in those instances where the pipe is completely deteriorated, that's where the most stormwater is getting into the sewer system, and that's where the biggest, the biggest problem, um, the biggest, biggest problem happens. Um, again, in all of the municipalities that we have, we've, we, you know, there is a cost, but this is upon property transfer when you have to do other things to get your house ready to be sold. Uh, but some of the examples and the costs were, uh, that were being cited seemed, seemed a bit extreme.
Okay, thank you.
No, yeah, I had the same concerns. Thank you for addressing that.
Yeah. Who else?
That's good.
And is it, Mr. Clark, is it safe to say that, like, all that leakage into the system is really being passed on to the rest of the ratepayers?
Um, it's being passed on to, that's exactly what you can say, because, um, treating, uh, a gallon of sewage or treating a gallon of rainwater, it's the same cost, uh, but the difference is TOFA, Bucks Water and Sewer can't charge you for the rainwater. So if you're putting a lot of sewage into the system, you're getting charged. If a lot of rainwater is getting into the system, then it just, it just raises the cost for everybody.
Okay. And if I'm buying a house, I'd, I'd like to know which shape the lines are in.
Yep.
I did have, talking with somebody, um, on our zoning board, actually, who mentioned he says it's similar to the law, I guess, was passed several years ago regarding homes that had oil tanks.
Correct.
You know, that when you, if you had a home that had an in grass, but in-ground oil tank, and you went to sell that property, you had to have some kind of inspection done, because, you know, otherwise, of course, for, I don't know how many decades, properties are just being sold. And somebody's buying a home where the oil tank is severely damaged or leaking, and they don't know it when they buy it. They find out a few years later, and then, of course, the costs are, you know, exorbitant. Uh, and so that was something that's, uh, very similar to this. It certainly, you know, it's never, it's never popular to add something. I mean, I think most of us, or if not everybody in the room, has bought and sold houses at different times in their, in their lives, moving from one home to another, and, you know, buying a home, selling a home is, is not necessarily fun things to do. Um, might be fun to go look at houses to buy, but the actual process of going through all the legalese and, and real estate, uh, you know, necessities is, is not a pleasant thing. So adding something on top is, you know, is never fun. Uh, but keep in mind, if any of us, uh, at some point, you know, we're most likely going to be moving and selling our homes at some-
Moving.
Yeah, well, I'm not moving now. Okay? But, uh, at some point in the future, and we're going to have to do this, so it is going to affect everybody. So, um, any, um, public comment? See no hands. Okay, this would be ordinance nineteen dash-
Four.
Four. Uh, and when, should notice, will this go into effect? Five days, okay. Right, so by the beginning of the new year?
Yes.
Yeah, this is effective. Okay. All right, ordinance nineteen dash four, is there a motion to, uh, adopt that ordinance?
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Minutes from our last meeting. Comments, questions, corrections?
No.
Okay. Mr. Snipes is in the audience. He could, uh, he, he started the tradition of saying excellent minutes as always, so-
I would have, but she's not here. I carried on that tradition. Mrs. Paul isn't here. And I doubt she's going to watch.
Yes. Uh, so any, um, motion to approve the minutes as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, engineers report. Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, during the month of November, you can see by report, we've had three new earth disturbances submitted. Um, no new land developments, no floodplain permits, and no cell tower applications. The earth disturbances are the Falls Township Pistol and Rifle Association. They are essentially putting up additional targets down at their facility. Um, they require a foundation, and that's why they needed the earth disturbance approval. Langhorn Equities LLC is, uh, for tree removals on Buckstown Road and Oxford Valley Road. Uh, we are going through, working with the attorneys to establish the tree replacement requirement, um, and, and that had to be in the form of an earth disturbance. The St. Francis Cabrini Church, um, is for hardscape landscape features, um, at their facility on Global Court, along with some parking expansion improvements. In terms of the ongoing land development projects, the updates are identified with red text. Um, some notable points, the Patient First is, um, ready for its permanent CO and it's been open. Um, the Outback Steakhouse, as we know, is open, and that's a completed project as well. Campy components to construction moves along smoothly. We're working on building slab footings along with stormwater management improvements. The WG Lincoln Properties is, um, I believe, a six forty Lincoln Highway. That's a combination of, um, rental space above, um, uh, storage for a store, uh, and they are-
That's across from Dunkin' Donuts. People keep asking me what that is.
That's correct. That's correct. Um, it's a mixed use. Uh, there's apartments and, um, and a contractor's, um, display area.
Right, right, yeah.
So they've, they've erected part of the building, and they, they had a little bit of a slowdown with their stormwater. It's an underground system, and they recently submitted to us, uh, a proposed replacement. It's in kind, and we have to review to make sure that it meets the same criteria that design did, and, and they'll start working on that right away. And then they'll continue with the building. Um, the JR Truck Smart Project is, um, is on hold for a zoning issue. That's a, a building addition to the Truck Smart Facility near extra space storage, um, and they have to go to the zoning hearing board because they're going to expand the non-conformity. So that, that should be in January's zoning hearing board agenda. The earth disturbance projects, again, not much to note, the Gilles Project is a minor building addition, and they started work with relocating a, a small storm sewer that was in the way. Um, the Predmore Pool, um, construction is started in the process. Uh, I already mentioned the Falls Township Pistol and Rifle Association and the other two projects. In terms of the ongoing capital work, uh, the Quaker Penn Park docks were removed at the boat ramp, and, um, they are, uh, going to be repaired uh, over the next couple of months by the dock manufacturer. Again, the two thousand and eighteen road program is down to minor punchless items, but it's essentially complete. And in terms of the two thousand and nineteen road program, uh, the contractor has started and moved, uh, fairly well with storm sewer improvements on Fletcher, um, starting at Bernard, working their way up. Um, we are scheduled for the resident meeting, um, on Thursday night in this room to review the next scope. Um, that's under design right now. We'll be out to bid, uh, for a springtime construction.
Okay, comments or questions for Mr. Jones?
No, great summary. Thank you.
Okay. Comments or questions? One question, Mr. Erickson?
I, I spoke to Mr. Sullivan a decade ago or so in regards to, I didn't ask you exactly where bedrock-
I take my kids, they put stuff for that.
Do you know any, any particular study?
They really buy it from me, but they got clothes.
Question about bedrock in Falls Township. Sorry, go ahead.
Sorry. I was going to say, that's a pretty, um, complex question. I mean, there's multiple levels of bedrock. We've experienced some on the road program at shallow depths up in the Hedrow Wood section. Some sure the geological formations vary throughout the Township, but you'd have to do a study to identify the various depths.
Are they even programs? Are, are, are engineers required to do such studies, or?
I wouldn't know if they're required to do any. I wouldn't imagine that they're required to do any studies. They could if they, if they chose to.
But there's such things they, the, the, the tests for, uh, for, uh, for, in regards to sewage, and, and supposedly it's stormwater, not necessarily going through the manhole covers, but through the domicile, seven thousand.
All right, just, uh, I'm, uh, it was a, was a very kind of technical conversation. I'm sure you, Mr. Jones, can continue it after, after the meeting's over, but we'll just, we'll get-
You can certainly-
Mr. Sullivan actually retired.
He did.
He did, yes. Yes, we'll have to try and, we'll make sure, we'll, we try and get his number for you.
We certainly can. You can certainly stop in our office. We're upstairs.
I believe he's currently working in East Norton Township in Montgomery County, so he can be reached there.
East Norton Township. That's correct. Yes, thank you, Mr. Gray, Mr. Uh, Mr. Clark. Um, is there a motion to approve the engineers' report as presented?
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Bill list for December seventeenth, twenty nineteen. Bills this month, the amount of one million, seven hundred ninety-one thousand, five hundred forty-five dollars and twenty-two cents. Of that, roughly one point eight million. About one point four million, uh, is salaries, benefits, as well as three, or two, excuse me, two state funds, uh, and the Esco Fund, which is money that Township collects from developers and holds, and then releases as they complete their projects, uh, which, in other words, not taxpayer money. Uh, so again, and also includes about seventy-fourth, firefighter incentives for about seventy-four members and auxiliary members. Uh, the Township does, is a project started, a program that started before I came on, actually, um, does provide financial incentives to firefighters and auxiliary members who, um, meet a certain number of calls or work a certain number of events at their respective fire companies. Those, uh, those names of those people are submitted to the fire marshal. He certifies them, and then they're given a, um, financial incentive, uh, in this bill list, so right for Christmas. So it's a way of, way of, uh, the Township thanking, uh, those people who volunteer their time. So some of that money's in here as well. Comments or questions on the bill list?
No.
No.
Okay. Uh, is there a motion to pay the bills December- Is there a motion to pay the bills, December 17th, 2019, $1,791,545.22?
So moved.
Seconded.
Mrs. Mall, take the role, please.
Mr. Gallaway?
Yes.
Mr. Borowski?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Dens?
Yes.
Yes. I should have, I'll go to Mr. Clark now, I should have asked for a summary of our executive session, we had one before this meeting.
Thanks, Mr. Harvey. Before the meeting, the board held an executive session to discuss a matter of potential litigation, various personnel matters, and a matter involving a collective bargaining agreement.
And we did also have a meeting a couple weeks ago of just the...
And, yes, we did, and let me...
To really go over the, it was really the collective bargaining agreement.
But let me just...
The lion's share of the discussion.
You have to report that date, so I apologize.
I believe it was December 3rd. Actually, I know it was December 3rd, it was my wife's birthday.
It was December 3rd, thank you. And we held an executive session to discuss a collective bargaining agreement.
Okay, thank you. All right, Police Department report, Chief? You have anything else to report, or you were, that's your accreditation? Okay, thank you, appreciate that. Manager's comment, Mr. Gray.
Yes, just one item at this time. The township received two escrow releases from Jones Engineering for the following, which include Marsville Commons, West Trenton Avenue, and Pine Grove Road. Escrow release amount is $163,940.29. This is release number 14, and this is a letter of credit. Also, St. Joseph's Court, located at New Falls Road, their amount is $147,660.60. This is also a letter of credit, and this is release number 11. Based on Jones Engineering Associates' inspection of each project, the work has been completed to their satisfaction, and the amounts are recommended for release by Jones Engineering. In addition, the township received an earth disturbance escrow release request from Katarzina Zekonsky, located at 716 Hood Boulevard. Escrow release amount is $1,400. This request has been reviewed by the Code Enforcement Office and the Township Engineers' Office, and has been approved for release. Board's asked, consider these escrow releases.
Mr. Gray, I have to admit, they're saying that name for the, that was, that was pretty good.
Practiced that ahead of time.
Actually, I did.
That's a tough one. That's a tough one. All right. So questions or comments regarding the escrow releases?
No. Marsville Commons, do they have any other escrow with us?
No, they have a minor subdivision, but that's the escrow that came from the overall construction project, and there's about $250,000 left for that third building site that is kind of buttoned up and not under construction.
And we're satisfied with the condition of that property now, that third site?
Yes. Well, it's a work in progress, we'll make sure that we're satisfied before they actually leave.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Okay. Is there a motion to authorize the two escrow releases and the earth disturbance escrow lease?
So moved.
Seconded.
Mrs. Mall, poll the board, please.
Mr. Gallaway?
Yes.
Mr. Borowski?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Dens?
Yes.
That's all I have, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. We'll finish with board comments, Mr. Gallaway.
Oh, can I come first?
I'm usually first.
Well, I just want to say that with the grace that you held that gavel, this is about my sixth year.
Sixth year, we just finished in six, yeah.
That's it. And prior to coming to the board, I had watched yourself, and Mr. Snipes is out in the audience, and I was impressed, and Mr. Dens was on the board, and the way you handled yourself under some difficult, trying meetings and circumstances, always with, always with a dignity that I can't tell you how much I admire. And inspired me to come out and serve on the board. And I know you're not leaving us, leaving us, good luck to everything, and Bucks County is that much better off. I feel my heart.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Mr. Borowski?
Yeah, and I mean, obviously, I feel the same way, you know, and it's, you know, it's been a nice six, six years, and I appreciate everything you've done to help me, you know, find my way here. Thank you, good luck.
Thank you, appreciate it. I feel like just calling on people to say nice things. I think it was another politician who did that several years ago.
Not nice.
Okay. Mr. Dens?
We heard from Mr. Mariani about Abraham Harvey.
Yeah.
Mr. Erickson, who came out of nowhere, we haven't seen you in a good 10 years, put up hazards, Harvey, but we're going to talk about Bob Harvey. And for my 10 years on this board, you're right, you held us to a higher standard and a level of professionalism that is unmatched. We have big shoes to fill, but you set the standard high. It's been a pleasure of serving with you, and I said this before when Sullivan retired, the greatest thing about this board is the friendships, and our families, everybody. It is a, it's been a great experience. And to say that we sat through some contentious meetings back with Mr. Snipes here, and, yes, not because of Mr. Snipes, when Mr. Snipes was here, it was tough, you know, and the way you handled yourself is, I don't think anybody else could have known it. But you did a great job, but we have one more thing. On behalf of Falls Township, we have the Golden Gavel.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
And he's not really leaving, he's not moving to Doylestown, there's no Commissioner's Mansion.
Right.
He's a star friend and neighbor.
That's right, that's right, yeah. Yeah, I have got that, oh, are you going to be moving to Doylestown? No, it's not, you know, it's not the other side of the country, it's just, it's not even the other side of the county, technically, so it's, but no, I do appreciate, thank you.
Don't forget about Rockwell.
I know, Mr. Rockwell.
Wait a minute. Now, you know, firstly, thank you for 16 years, I mean, it's not easy. We know what it takes to govern this township, so thank you for this 16 years. It's been a pleasure and honor serving with you. There's no one more deserving, I think, to be up in Doylestown representing all of us, so thank you for that, and best of luck. You will be missed.
Thank you, thank you, I appreciate that. Yeah, it's funny, you spent, or I spent, I should say, a year essentially, kind of going all over the county, talking about what I wanted to do, and talking about myself, people didn't know me, and then I've been thinking for a couple of weeks about what I'd say tonight, knowing, of course, this was my last meeting, and it's been sort of the hardest thing to sort of come up with something to say. So I thought about kind of where it began, you know, in 2001, Jim Prokopak ran with Jonathan Snipes, and they won, and they started introducing a new level of professionalism and decorum. It was an uphill battle for them, but they weathered on, and they really did inspire me to run. And I'll be honest, in 2003, Jim Prokopak was running for reelection, and the other seat that was up was held by Rich Otto, who I had a lot of respect for. And I actually got into the race to run for supervisor not expecting to win. I just thought to myself, I'm not going to beat Rich Otto, but at least I'll get my name out, and people will know, so that in two years later, I could run again, and, you know, I won't be a complete stranger. And I think to everybody's surprise, that year, Rich Otto, who had only served one term as supervisor, decided not to run. And so what I thought was just me running sort of a kamikaze mission against a pretty popular and respected guy turned into like, you know, I remember looking in the newspaper and seeing his name wasn't there, and thinking, oh, wait, I might actually win. And so there are a lot of people who helped along the way. One of the people who obviously is probably the most important is, did pop into the room for maybe one of the, only the second time in the 16 years I've been on the board, which is my wife. So she's been, you know, we've talked a lot about the first swearing-in, where she was holding my daughter, who was three, I guess, at the time, and our son was, I guess, six at the time.
It's crazy.
And now he's graduating from college, and she's graduating from high school. And so it's, or I guess they were two, five and two, I guess they were. And so it's, it certainly has been a long, a long way up. It'd be interesting if there was a photo of that first swearing-in, to the swearing-in, it's going to happen on January 6th up in Doylestown, where the two, you're not going to be able to hold Emma, but, you know, you know, she could, yeah, try to recreate it. But, you know, I have enjoyed myself on this board, it has obviously been tough at times, but it's, you know, it's the work of people like the ones up here with me now, the people who are sitting down here at this, at these tables here. Peter Gray has been here longer than pretty much everybody else in the room, except for Chief Wilcox, you know, in terms of his dedication to this township, and what he's done as a finance director and as manager, under equal, you know, really under some very, very trying times. And he's performed, you know, incredibly well, and I appreciate everything he's done, and all the slings and arrows he took over the years. We do have a great staff. It was Pete who brought in Betsy Rukoff, stole her from Middletown, and, you know, their losses are tremendous gain, and so he deserves a lot of credit for that. And certainly with, you know, all the people who work here, a lot of good people work in this building, on every room, every department, to do good stuff and to work for the people of this township, and it's been my honor to be up here, to be elected by the people of this community. Thank you for trusting me. I hope that I have lived up to it. I remember, the only promise I made when I first ran knocking doors, they would say, what are you going to do? You know, what's your promise? And my only promise, I said, I'm only making one promise, which is that I'll work as hard as I can. That's it. I'm not going to make any other promises. Because I think we should be aware of politicians that make too many promises. Because in the end, circumstances sometimes, you know, outdull you when you think you can do something and you can't. And then now you've made promises and you can't keep. And so I'll make the same promise as the county commissioner, that I'm going to do the best I can, and I hope that it's enough. And if it is, then I guess maybe I'll have that job a little, for a little while, and if not, then, you know, I'll be, I'll be looking for something else to do in a couple of years. But I did submit a letter of resignation, which will be effective on January 1st, and I have to ask, as my final, I guess, duty, next to last duty as a chairman, I have to ask that it be accepted by this board, so that you can then appoint somebody to replace me. Otherwise, you just kind of, you know, it's going to go against four people, so there has to be a motion for that, I guess.
Tonight?
Yeah.
And what if we don't? I'll make the motion.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
I'll abstain. And I guess my final act, using the gavel, before I hand it over to...
One more thing, let's see, is anybody else that wants a comment before Mr. Harvey leaves this last meeting? No?
No, it's all right. We've talked enough. We've talked enough. Actually, I did, I made some notes and I forgot to look at them. I do think, and it's a shame Mr. Mariani left, and Mrs. Batista's here, you know, I do think, and just for this board, I think the budget we pass this year is a very, very good one, but I do think there needs to be a lot of attention paid to making sure that we are putting, keeping the township on a solid financial ground. And I really would recommend highly looking, doing a serious study into an EIT for next year's budget, because I really do think that there is money, I think we're probably over the percentage of people right now in this township who are paying it somewhere, and it could be coming here. And so that's something I think that I'll recommend. And I will close out by wishing everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, and a Happy New Year. Hopefully, it's full of peace and prosperity for everybody, and say a prayer for our nation. There are few times in our history when we've been in the circumstances we are now, and I think a little prayer can't hurt right now. So with that, I'll undertake a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
You going to come around front?